Welcome to, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Monroe County Public Library. We'll start as usual by introducing ourselves, and if you care to share what you're reading, please do. Fred, you want to start us off?
Sure. I just finished that biography of Hitler that I told you about. My name is Fred Reissinger.
My name is Kari Essery, and I just finished Cloud Cuckoo Land, which is by Anthony Doerr. I really loved All the Light You Cannot See, and this is another good one. It's pretty new.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm reading The World Between Blanks.
I'm Marilyn Wood, and I'm reading A Promised Land by Barack Obama.
John Walsh, I'm rereading Frank Herbert's Dune before seeing the new movie.
I'm David Ferguson. I'm reading someone else's recommendation, The Splendid and the Vile. Was that you? All right. That's good.
Jamie Burkhart, and I just picked up the book New Kid.
Kathy Loser, and I'm just starting The Midnight Library by Matt Haig.
We've heard of that one around this table before also. Yeah. Thank you, everyone. And do we have a motion to approve our consent agenda, which includes minutes, monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, personnel report, and our board meeting calendar?
So move in a second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, clarifications? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And I'll turn it over to Marilyn for highlights from her monthly report.
Thanks. So I have a few items to highlight, mostly about content and programs. We also have an update from Steph Niemeyer tonight on access and content, so I won't steal her thunder on all those things, but I'll talk a little bit about some of the projects that we're working on now. One of them that you would have seen in the director's report was about our local yearbooks. We are doing a digitization project to put all of our local yearbooks online. And many of them, the content has been received back, and we're working on the descriptive text for about 148 years of yearbooks. And high school yearbooks.
Fair if you go to every other hometown of all the trustees and put theirs.
Oh, up there too. Ah, there you go. Yeah.
Does it have university school too?
It has university school.
Awesome. I used to have those in the library at North.
Yeah, some of those are already available. There's certainly an index that describes some of those. But anyway, those will be available, we hope, in the second quarter of 2022. We're working on it right now, but I think Steph can provide additional answers to any of our questions about what those are. The yearbooks themselves will be searchable. Yes, they are. You may have to, well, I'll let her speak to this more in a moment, but I won't get in there where I may not know what I'm talking about. Also, we partnered with IU on an IU Science Fest program this year. It was really where caregivers and children came to explore science topics. It was held at IU, but they had a map of how to get to the library and to our garden, our children's garden, where one of our building services staff members had constructed a giant scale. And so kids came back and they were able to put bean bags on it. And so it was a very interactive program that related to science in a real fun and positive way. And then another thing that we partnered on this past month was the Munir County Childhood Conditions Summit, which was held at the library, and there were about 140 community participants. And it was a chance to really bring people together to talk about development and brain development of kids. And Lisa Champelli was one of the planning team members, and she presented opening remarks to that program. So I'm happy to answer any other questions about the director's report.
Thank you, Marilyn. And moving on to old business, we have an update on the Southwest Branch from Greer.
I'll actually give that one because there is none.
Or from Maryland.
We don't have anything new to report, other than we hope that we'll be breaking ground any day. They were awaiting the final permits, which were received late last week.
And then the Smithville contract.
The Smithville contract is an old business because it's very similar to the contracts that we talked about for the downtown and Ellisville Library. This one, however, is for new service. So this contract is for a similar kind of service, contract language, et cetera, but it will be for the Southwest Branch Library. And they will, as it goes, they will install, but we won't pay until service is actually turned on. So this is just in advance to ensure that we have service availability.
Any questions on either of those items?
Smithville would require an approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the new Smithville contract for service to the Southwest Branch?
I move that we approve it.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the contract with Smithville for service to the Southwest Branch, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And this is an action item?
The new business isn't, yes, it's an action item also.
Do we have a motion to approve the 2022 ARPA grant to approve the appropriation of funds?
So move in a second.
We have a motion in a second.
This is also a resolution to establish a fund for this as a federal grant.
Very briefly, earlier this year, we requested and received funds to purchase additional field equipment for CATS to better enable our CATS crew to provide hybrid local meeting coverage and participation on the part of the public. This is important because we have seen an increase in virtual meeting attendance and participation since the onset of COVID, but more importantly, we feel this is something that's very likely to continue even after we emerge from the pandemic. So this grant is part of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and is a federal grant with funds distributed by way of the Indiana State Library. We are required to establish an ARPA grant fund and to approve the appropriation of those funds. So tonight, we have a resolution to establish the fund line and to approve the appropriation of the funds.
Any questions or discussion?
What were the amount of the funds that you received?
Eighteen thousand and change, correct? I don't know what the exact number is.
Did I bring it down somewhere and didn't bring it with me? What is some of the equipment to buy with it?
It's very, seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Some of the equipment includes studio racks for the control room, microphones, audio monitors, HD web presenters, smart panels, LCD rack mount monitors, and a whole host of CATS-specific equipment that I'm not going to pretend to describe effectively. But we work closely with CATS on identifying what this equipment list would be, what they would do with it, and we're excited to put it out in the field and see how it works.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor of approving the resolution to establish an American Rescue Plan Act Grant Fund and approve appropriation of funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And now we have an update on the 2021 Pioneer Grant from Sam Ott, Laura Wise, and Edwin Falwell.
And I will give you a short preview of what this means. So on an annual basis, the library administration and the library innovation grant team entertains funding requests for projects that benefit our patrons. The grants are awarded from friends of library funding, and the grants are designed to support a range of library initiatives, including programs, services, and collections, such as a one-time or a series of programs, pilot collections, and new services for targeted audiences. The grant team seeks to invest in projects that are forward-thinking, impactful on patron experience, practical, and sustainable in their application. In recent years, the amount of the grants has ranged from $400 to $1,500. Highest priority in the evaluation of grant proposals is given to proposals that incorporate and embrace alignment with the library's mission, imaginative, innovative, or transformative solutions to critical patron issues or needs, contributing to the development of a knowledgeable, inclusive, diverse, and engaged community empowered by the library, and demonstration of outcomes and their measurements. So today, we have last year's winners, and they're going to describe to you their project.
Hello, everybody. I'm Sam. I'm one of the teen librarians here at the library.
And I'm Laura. I'm also in the teen department.
My name is Edwin. I work in adult services and Level Up.
So we chose role-playing games. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, but it's just a type of game that you can play with a group of friends. But we chose that as the item we wanted to circulate because it has experienced a resurgence in popularity in the past six years, and it's also very popular with teen and new adult audiences, as well as tween audiences as well. And it promotes collaboration and critical thinking because players create this shared narrative space that they can guide and interact with. And then it also creates a community and fosters interactive storytelling mediums. And so our kits in the library include all of the parts that are necessary to play. So this reduces the barrier of costs and personal resources, just trying to make it as accessible as possible. And then it also creates opportunities for the library to step in and facilitate collaboration, creativity, and connection with the shared interests.
So we really wanted to make sure that there were circulatable self-contained RPG experiences because one of the issues a lot of people have when they want to try out new games are that the games are fairly expensive, oftentimes forty or fifty dollars just for one booklet. And so by providing that, we can let people kind of check that out and experience it together before they commit those funds, and they can, you know, try a whole bunch of different options instead. And we really wanted to make sure that this was available for adults because currently we have a lot of RPG experiences available for tweens and teens, but not necessarily as many available for adults. This kind of creates a little more equity in that area. It also allows us to just provide it for all audiences in general. It also promotes the library as a place that offers unconventional materials. We currently have the Library of Things available, Where These Live, but with the building of the Southwest Branch and the teaching kitchen, we thought that there would be likely we'll start to add more things to that collection, so this fits in very well. They are offering kind of unconventional materials. It also connects with the library's strategic goals because Quater's storytelling through RPGs is a creative social activity that allows participants to connect with one another, promotes reading, and encourages lifelong learning. So these kits allow the library to be at the center of that connection. And we actually brought one with us today. So inside of the kits, we wanted to make sure that we had everything players would need, so we made sure to provide an adventure module that has what the game master or can lead everybody through, so they don't have to create it. There is one that's already there. We also made sure to provide all the dice, because a lot of times there are very specific dice you need to play these adventures, character sheets and grids, so that the player can go through that, and also just a basic manual that allows everybody to get on the same page and read through that, so that way everybody has exactly what they need. And if you're interested, we'll have this available on the table, so you can check that out.
So our most old-used kits have been our D&amp;D kits, our Dungeons and Dragons kits. It's a very traditional role-playing game and a very popular one. We anticipated this, and so we created more of those kits. There are two different versions of it and four kits in total. Another kit that took us a bit by surprise was Monster of the Week. It's a Buffy the Vampire Slayer sort of themed game where adventurers go on episodic adventures and try to slay the monster. So these items have been highly desired by patrons. More than half of all of the checkouts are stemming from patrons placing those items on hold, which is a really good rate of utilization for the Library of Things. These items are also circulating at a pretty high rate. About 60% of all the available time that an item exists in the library, it's checked out and in a patron's care. Yeah, so if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Is it the same three-week cycle?
Yes, it is the same three-week cycle as other types of materials like it.
Have you gotten any response from the players?
Yeah, well, a lot of anecdotal evidence. We've had players come in and excitedly tell us about, look at this cool new thing I found upstairs, because we'll have teens come into the teen space, happy that they discovered this, and we're like, oh, yeah, what a good idea. So, yeah, no, people have had a chance to try out some new games that they've never had an opportunity to play, that they've always kind of desired to. And so providing those opportunities for people to explore different ways of doing these kinds of like shared social storytelling is pretty exciting for us.
You mentioned the instruction manuals or sheets. Are there, is that one for everyone to share, or are there multiple copies of that?
There's one for everybody to share. So it's essentially like a resource guide where you can play the game without it, but you can go back to it if you have questions. So everybody in the group should be able to just play with one, and then the module contains multiple adventures for the one person leading the group. So you can check this out with multiple different experiences each time.
So they have consumable products in there.
Correct, yeah. The only thing that might be consumed is a wet erase marker that we could replace, but we do have some replaceable items already in stock to change those out.
Yeah, as part of our grant funds, we made sure to purchase additional items for things like markers or dice, so that way if those things got lost during the kits, ACS would have those available to restock that.
So the player sheets, those are reusable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I was just going to say they're laminated, and that's why we provide the wet erase marker to make sure we don't have to keep printing off copies.
And then when Laura did a lot of the work, Laura and Edwin, on those character sheets, we made sure to then upload those in a Google Drive folder for ACS, so if they lose any of those, they can just reprint that and laminate it and have it available again. That way, it's not something they have to ever hunt for.
Has this been like marketed out there, that these are at the library?
Indeed, yeah. So our marketing team has done a really good job of promoting these through Facebook. I believe we've had posts on Instagram. We've cross-posted on our teen Instagram as well. And we also have a D&amp;D podcast that was done somewhat in support of this, and you guys have certainly mentioned that several times, that we have these available.
Any plans that you can make more, or is it pretty much maxed out?
That would be a question that we'd have to work with ACS, but...
Yeah, I would love to make more because there are a lot of other games that have more diverse creators too that we can access and make sure that everybody feels represented, but that's also if we have the money for ACS. Yeah.
Do they have a room here that they use, or do they usually check it out and do it at home?
Yeah. There's the Library of Things space upstairs where El Centro was located before. They moved into the Indiana Room's former office. That area contains a number of different Library of Things things that Steph perhaps can speak more to.
And I do know that some people do check them out and use them in like the study rooms upstairs. We had a few teens check them out just because they want the adventure module for something they're playing, and they'll use it in the ground floor and then leave, but a lot of people would ideally play them out in the community or in their homes.
I imagine, like, the role-playing games are good because there aren't a lot of like cards or pieces that can get lost and then, you know, mess up the game. But are there, I assume there are public libraries that have more or less extensive collections of other tabletop games? And do we have that, or have we talked about that?
So that's a conversation we've had on and off for a few years, but we've never been able to really nail down how we would, you know, catalog those or like circulate them or check them. There are some interesting systems Edwin found that use like a baking scale, where when an item is returned, you have a certain amount of weight that if it's off by, you'll open the board game and check it for lost pieces, otherwise you don't. But again, that's something that we'd have to talk a lot with Steph about because the processing of those items, and you have like 200 loose pieces inside there would be a bit of a nightmare sometimes, but we're excited to continue looking at that just because these kits show that, you know, people really do want that. And I've had anecdotally several families during the pandemic asking me, like, do you have board games that you circulate that we could play at home? So I think there is a desire for that that we'd like to explore.
We do have board games in the library. In very areas where people can play, but it's just not a circulating item.
Well, thank you very much. It's a very cool and exciting project. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Very much. We're actually going to get back to our desks. So.
Oh, yeah.
No, this is Disney feed, yes.
And next, we have our update on access and content services from Steph Niemeyer.
Hi, everyone. I'm Steph Niemeyer, the Access and Content Services Manager. As you know, I started here in April of 2019 as the Assistant Manager of ACS under Greer Carson, and then moved to the role of Manager in November of 2020. I'd like to also introduce our new Assistant Manager of Access and Content Services. Will Scharfenberger is not able to be here tonight, but they were hired in May of 2021 and have taken up the direct oversight of our second-floor staff. They've been a pleasure to work with, and I'm really happy to have them on board. So you may already know, but Access and Content Services oversees the acquisition, preparation, and processing of all of our physical materials, the acquisition and maintenance of all of our digital collection, and we're responsible for the proper organization of our physical items and of our online catalog. To summarize, we buy, prep, check in, shelf, edit, and pull literally everything that the library circulates, streams, or provides. 2020 and 2021 have been interesting years for everyone, and MCL and ACS are no exception. We've adapted to changes in building and collection use and have closely monitored our physical and digital collections, as the trends that we're used to have been relatively uncertain. Throughout 2021, use of our physical collection has been slowly increasing. In August of this year, we finally reached 200,000 items checked out or renewed, a number we've not seen since February of 2020. And while we're still working towards our 2019 levels of overall use, some use and services have regained some normalcy. For example, the total number of holds on items that have been requested so far in 2021 is almost 274,000, which averages out to more a month than we were experiencing in 2019. Our order, or, I lost my place here. Do. Okay, so, yeah, our ordering and acquisitions of new items in 2021 is also close to our 2019 levels. In 2019, we averaged about 3,900 items ordered monthly, and in 2021, we've been ordering almost 36,000 items monthly. Digital collection use has been slowly decreasing, which is a trend that we expected after such high use in 2020. But even though the use has decreased, the relative use to 2019 per month is still much higher. So that indicates to us that our digital collections are strong and have even been gaining in popularity. Free Go, Hoopla, and Overdrive remain our most popular digital resources, and Canopy, Ancestry, and World Book remain a close second. I've been working closely with our non-print selector brand in Rome to find the right balance in our e-content budget as we adapt to these changes in use. Our ACS catalogers have completed a variety of projects to ensure that our collections remain accessible to our patrons. Some highlights include consolidating all labeling of items to ACS to ensure consistency, creating some new material types for items to better classify them in our online catalog. We've cleaned up the cataloging of holiday AV items to ensure consistency across both of our branches. And we've updated the labels of our juvenile first chapter books to include a prefix instead of indicating that collection by a sticker. So as you've heard a little bit about, we've also been steadily enhancing our Library of Things collection. The Library of Things was born from a need to circulate these more non-traditional items like RPG kits. It started with book club kits, hotspots, and energy monitors, and has since expanded into a seemingly ever-growing collection to house all of our things. We created an adult Library of Things collection and a juvenile Library of Things collection to better serve the specific audiences. The adult collection has its own room on the second floor of the downtown library, and our juvenile collections are housed in the children's departments at both libraries. In 2021 alone, we added the following things to that collection. Thirty additional mobile hotspots. We have a total of 50. Ten cellular-enabled iPads. Three mobile video production kits. Eleven role-playing game kits. Four calculators. Six 16-gigabyte flash drives. And five 1-terabyte external hard drives. That collection also includes adult book club kits, adventure backpacks, energy monitors, juvenile toys, juvenile storytime kits, juvenile launchpads, and juvenile book club kits. We do anticipate this collection to continue to grow in size and direction, and we're envisioning ways to circulate things like kitchen gadgets and cookware to complement our Southwest Branch's teaching kitchen, as well as things like yard and garden tools to complement our seed library. And finally, I'd like to discuss our digitization initiative. In late 2020, we sent our first batch of yearbooks to Easter Seals Crossroads in Indianapolis to be digitized, and we've since received the scans for the 200, I have 244, but I think that number was a little different. Unique years of Bloomington, Ellisville, Steinsville, and Edgewood schools, and are now working to upload those 40,874 pages to Content DM and complete the final edits and alternative text to increase the accessibility of that collection. I think I heard a question earlier, will it be searchable online? It'll be completely searchable. It has OCR, and then one of my staff members has been adding that alternative text to increase that accessibility. And then in September of this year, we shipped a second batch of yearbooks to Easter Seals Crossroads, totaling 98 unique years of some additional schools around town, as well as the 2021 additions of Bloomington and Edgewood schools. So the website holding all of this information is still in draft form. We're not ready to share it yet, but we're nearing a point of being able to share at least the URL with all of our community. We hope that this searchable digital yearbook collection increases access and use of our yearbooks, and we're proud of the accessibility initiatives that we've taken in adding that alt text, which describes those extra images for visually impaired users. We do intend to maintain a relationship with Easter Seals Crossroads and continue to digitize newly published yearbooks. But as this big project comes to a close, our investment in digitization going forward can be routed to other projects, of which I've already received a few proposals. So that's all I have for now. I hope you've enjoyed the highlight of ACS from 2020/2021, and thanks for your continued support.
Did you have any years that were gapped, that you didn't have in certain schools, that you had to do some research to find those?
I think we had just a few years. I'd have to look at all of our statistics. I think it was just a few, though. There were some years where we had multiple copies, but both copies were like, had pictures cut out of them or pages missing, and we had to just pick the better of the two. Or in some instances, we sent both copies and requested, here's these pages of this one, please take these pages of this one, so that we'd have a complete set.
Did you work with any of the high school librarians to see what they had in their collection, or was this your own collection?
This was, to start, it was just our own collection. But I have been reaching out to folks at Harmony School, and I think we have a contact at MCCSC. I haven't been in touch with them lately, but we have been getting donations of some of the bigger gaps we've had from Harmony, which is fun. Yeah.
Do we have our own Content DM, or do we use the state libraries?
We have our own. We still have access to the state libraries, but we're uploading this to ours.
Who owns the copyright on the yearbooks, and do you have to deal with that?
I believe the schools still do. We've asked them if there's any issue. They haven't said yes, so.
That was a great project.
Thanks. We're excited about it.
The 1990s didn't work very well.
It's nice to be able to have someone else do all of the scanning for us, for sure.
Well, thank you very much. The Access and Content Services doesn't always get the same recognition as like programming and summer reading program, but without content, we don't really have a library. So thank you for all your work and your team, and it was really content that kept us going all through the pandemic when we couldn't do many of the other things we do. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And it's time for public comment. If there are members of the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and share your thoughts. It's been intimidating to wrap the gap with... Yeah. [laughter][1785.15]